I'm going to call the meeting to order. There's a quorum. The tellers, we have tellers appointed tonight. We have Wendy Fossa, Shelley Bradbury, Rob Fitzgibbons, Vicky Cataldo, Rebecca Jones, Ann Buckley, and Carla Christiansen.
Not Shelley, I was wrong.
Oh, sorry. We can scratch Shelley, sorry.
Sorry, I brought the wrong names down, sorry.
Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Didn't mean to scare you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you say standing, we have two people we want to recognize that have passed. We have Peter Wilson, who was the clam warden, and we have George French, who was on the fire department. Thank you. Now you may be seated. I can verify that the warrant has been posted in the proper locations. I will take a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Any.
Any opposed? The finance committee chair, do you, Jody? Finance committee chair, do you want to recognize each article individually or do you approve all of the monetary articles as a committee? Okay, so you don't have to do it individually, you're all good. Yes. Any non-registered voter or not a resident needs to be sitting over there. If you don't have an orange card, you should be sitting right over there with the guy waving his hand. And that's the only way you're going to hold cards up again to vote. It's not actually busy tonight, but try to keep the discussion in the audience to a minimum because I can't hear it, but people next to you can hear it. So it's disruptive to them trying to understand what's going on. If we could do that, that'd be great. Before we get into the articles, I believe Brennan's got a couple of announcements and then we're going to do awards.
Moderator, just a couple of announcements while we have everybody assembled. The open space committee, you may have seen some of those folks on the way in, is updating the Essex Open Space Plan, and a link to their survey, which they're doing with respect to the open space plan update, can be found on the town website. I want to mention that the Manchester Essex Regional School Building Committee is having the second public forum regarding the Essex Elementary renovation or replacement. That's November 20th, right here. I believe it's at 6:00 PM. Fire Department spaghetti dinner, 4:00 to 7:00 this Saturday at the Public Safety Building. The Affordable Housing Trust is finishing up work on the town's very first housing production plan, and the document is actually going to be put up on the town website very soon. So if you're interested in that, would love to hear, have your comments. And then finally, the town has completed its update of its federal hazard mitigation plan, and the selectmen have adopted it. It'll go up on the town website after it comes back from FEMA. Thank you.
Alba?
Thank you all for coming to our annual Fall Town Meeting. So we're into awards areas, and I have for, sorry, I should have taken this out first, for Eric Hilt, he is Height?
Heights.
Heights. We have an award for 20 years of service for the town of Essex. And now, believe it or not, we have for the fire department, Dave Perrine, having gotten an award for 35 years of service on our fire department. And next, 40, 40 years. Any fire department want to raise their hand? Who's that? Dan Desette, would you please come up and accept your award? So those of you that attend our Fall Meeting, we give out the award for Employee of the Year. This year, recipient is April Warner from the library. So I do, I do want to say a couple of things. So April has welcomed children and families to the library for over 18 years. She coordinates and delivers weekly story hours and has designed and implemented our summer reading program since 2007. Very impressive. Her work has positively impacted many families and helped thousands of children learn to love books and reading. April is regularly mentioned in patrons' surveys, program evaluations, and notes accompanying donations from friends at the library. She has developed strong working relationships with the director of the Early Childhood Partner Program, as well with the Essex Elementary School Library. April, thank you for all of your service.
Thank you.
And we do have a box for you, so you don't have to carry that. And our next award, we actually have two retirees this year that also have substantial time. So Dottie Elwell, if anybody of you have gone into the tax office? She now has a weapon, it's so heavy. This is in recognition of her service of 37 years, unwavering service upon retirement to the town of Essex. I know where she lives. And then the next one, we also have Mike Galli, and Mike's 35?
He's not here tonight.
He's not here tonight, but he's 35?
Since 1988. It's the same award that...
So, so all, please, for, you know, Mike Galli, he's also retiring in December. Thank you.
Thanks to all those folks. Move right to Article One. Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would ask your permission to address Articles One and Two simultaneously. They're related. I would like to talk about them at the same time, and then we could have separate votes because they are a different quantum of vote.
Okay, so what Lisa's asking is, we can discuss both Article One and Two together? I need the audiences' okay to do such a thing? It's sort of normal operating procedures. But if I, all those in favor of combining both of those for discussion purposes, say aye, or raise your card. Any opposed? So we're now going to discuss both articles because they're tied together pretty good. When she's all done, we'll vote on each one differently because Article One is a majority vote, Article Two is a two-thirds vote. So we have to vote on those individually. Lisa.
Thank you. Article One, I, Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the town bylaws, Section 2-8, Planning Board, as shown in Article One of the warrant. And Article Two, I, Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws, Section 6-10.2, Planning Board, 6-10.3, Board of Appeals, and 6-7, additional requirements, as shown in Article Two of the warrant.
Second?
You're going to hear this from me a lot tonight. This is housekeeping, in a way. The reason there are two separate articles is that Chapter Two of the zoning bylaw, I'm sorry, Chapter Two is not the zoning bylaw, Chapter Two is part of the town general bylaws, and it's where the planning board and the Board of Appeals are both established. Many years ago, the Board of Appeals, the Zoning Board of Appeals, was addressed in Chapter Six and has a section in Chapter Six, the zoning bylaw, that describes their responsibilities and duties. The planning board does not have that yet, and what these two articles are asking the town to do is to move language from Chapter Two, yeah, Chapter Two, into Chapter Six, so that both the planning board and the Zoning Board of Appeals are similarly defined in Chapter Six instead of Chapter Two. So we've gone through all the language, nothing really changes. It's more just to keep things consistent and to define the role of the planning board in Chapter Six. All the language is there. I'm happy to answer any questions, but unless there are questions, I'm not going to drag it out and elaborate.
Any further discussion? If you're going to discuss an article at any time, there's speaker there, 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 and there. So if you could come up during the process ahead of time, so we can, I can establish a queue if we're going to have a queue, and then I know we're going to have a discussion. I can see we're not going to have any more discussions. So we will remove right to a vote on Article One. All those in favor of Article One, raise your card. Opposed? Article One passes. Article Two, two-thirds required. All those in favor of Article Two, raise your card. Opposed? It's unanimous. Article Two passes. Article Three?
Thank you. Article Three, I, Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws, Section 6-10.2.1, membership and organization, as shown in Article Three of the warrant.
Is there a second? Discussion?
The planning board has voted to support this article. This article is asking to establish two new, what are called, associate positions for the planning board. These two positions would be by appointment and would be members, associate members of the planning board, who would not act with the planning board in a normal course of business, but would sort of be understudies, is a word, for lack of a better word, to describe their role. And the reason that we need those, and the Zoning Board of Appeals already has these associate members and has had them for years, and the reason is there are some decisions that the planning board needs to make particularly for special permits, which is why we're asking for this, that require, they require a supermajority of our board to vote on it. So to approve a special permit requires five of seven members on the voting, the planning board to approve a special permit. And then also, if, if you're in the process of hearing a special permit and it goes over several meetings, planning board members can't miss more than one meeting. You can miss one meeting and make it up, but if you miss more than one, you can't vote on that particular special permit. And the reason this is important is because if the planning board fails to approve or deny a special permit, if they fail to take a vote that has a five-member consensus on that, whether it's approve or disapprove, a special permit is automatically granted. So we run the risk of if there are two people who need to recuse themselves because they're a butters or somehow involved in a project, however, which is not unforeseen because it's a small town and we all sort of live around here, that we could run the risk of not having a quorum to be able to vote on a special permit. So what this article would do is establish two people as associate members who, if we know we have a conflict between a number of planning board members, they can sort of sit out the special permit hearing, and one of the associate members can fill in for them. So that's the point of it. The Zoning Board of Appeals, like I said, has had these two associate members in place for years for the same reason. The Zoning Board of Appeals has three members and needs to have a consensus of three people to make a decision. And if someone has a conflict because they're in a butter or something, then they need to backfill that spot with one of the associate members. So this article asks to establish that in the bylaw, that we would have two associate members, and we're going to be working with town council to establish the appointment procedure, and either we'll do that in our rules and regulations, or we'll come back in May with another bylaw change, but we need to work that through with town council. But tonight, we wanted to ask for the permission to create those two positions.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, this is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, raise your card. All those opposed? It's unanimous. Article Four.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws, 6-3.3.3.5.1, permitted principal uses, and 6-3.3.3.7, dimensional and density regulations, as shown in Article Four of the warrant.
Discussion?
So this article is the famous 3A regulation, the MBTA zoning that the states require for all towns within the MBTA service district to meet. As background, we started working with MAPC on some bylaw update project in 2022, and this is when the law was new, and the, and the MAPC reviewed our status and found that the downtown zoning district was compliant when the whole effort was starting out. Since then, state regulations have gotten refined and the modeling tools have been updated, and it turns out that we're not actually in compliance. So our downtown district is where we're looking at what, I should back up. The requirements for 3A is that there has to be a zone in town where multifamily zoning is allowed by right. Our downtown district, which is most of Main Street, already has multifamily housing as a permitted right, and it allows up to four units by right, and more than four units is a special permit. To be, to meet the MBTA requirements, it has to be a by right. It can't be a special permit thing. So we have to have multifamily by right in a certain area in town. So the downtown district easily, there are two criteria that a town has to meet to be compliant, and one is the number of units that could be built out. And this is all hypothetical numbers. When they talk about capacity and density, it's, it's just a theoretical number, meaning that it would be allowed. There's no requirements for development. There's no requirement that anything else to happen other than a bylaw change to meet state compliance guidelines. So there's, for every town, based on its size, there's a number of units, and so it's a capacity that you have to meet. Our number is 83. Our downtown district has several hundred as a capacity. So we easily meet that capacity number. What we don't meet is a density number. And density is just that. It means that you have to have, in that district, you have to have the capacity for 15 units per acre as a density number. Density makes sense when you're talking about a town that actually has a T station. We do not, but yet we're still being held to this density standard, and there's not really any way around it. And the problem with the MBTA zoning is that if a town is not compliant, we stand to lose funding from a lot of state grants and programs. That's step number one. Step number two is the state will start to fine us. And step number three is if you are still not compliant, then the state can come in and rewrite your bylaw however they see fit. So we worked, starting earlier this year, worked again with MAPC, and they're running the compliance models for us in this software that I won't even pretend to understand. But what has fallen out of that is that if we make a couple minor changes to just the multifamily category in the downtown district, we will be compliant. So what it means is that instead of up to four units by right in the downtown district for multifamily, it would be six units by right, and then to take off the minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet and have no minimum lot size, but that reverts to the state minimum of 5,000 square feet. Making those two changes brings us into compliance. It's, it doesn't seem to be that big of a lift, and the reason why is because in the downtown district, there are two categories that allow a property owner to develop multifamily housing. One is straight multifamily housing that is only residential, and that's the category that we're looking to change. And the other category is mixed use. So mixed use is what the downtown district was developed for, to allow commercial, commercial use on the first floor and residential use on other floors or the back of the building, whatever. So the mixed use criteria, the mixed use category is not changing. The mixed use is still, you're allowed to have one commercial unit and up to three residential units. Any more than three is by special permit. When the downtown district was created, the goal was to sort of incentivize, incentives, make it an incentive to use the mixed use criteria. So if you look at the setbacks for... To be, to meet the MBTA requirements, it has to be a by right. It can't be a special permit thing. So we have to have multifamily by right in a certain area in town. So the downtown district easily, there are two criteria that a town has to meet to be compliant, and one is the number of units that could be built out. And this is all hypothetical numbers. When they talk about capacity and density, it's just a theoretical number, meaning that it would be allowed. There's no requirements for development. There's no requirement that anything else to happen other than a bylaw change to meet state compliance guidelines. So there's, for every town, based on its size, there's a number of units, and so it's a capacity that you have to meet. Our number is eighty-three. Our downtown district has several hundred as a capacity. So we easily meet that capacity number. What we don't meet is a density number. And density is just that. It means that you have to have, in that district, you have to have the capacity for fifteen units per acre as a density number. Density makes sense when you're talking about a town that actually has a T station. We do not, but yet we're still being held to this density standard, and there's not really any way around it. And the problem with the MBTA zoning is that if a town is not compliant, we stand to lose funding from a lot of state grants and programs. That's step number one. Step number two is the state will start to fine us. And step number three is if you are still not compliant, then the state can come in and rewrite your bylaw however they see fit. So we worked, starting earlier this year, worked again with MAPC, and they're running the compliance models for us in this software that I won't even pretend to understand. But what has fallen out of that is that if we make a couple minor changes to just the multifamily category in the downtown district, we will be compliant. So what it means is that instead of up to four units by right in the downtown district for multifamily, it would be six units by right. And then to take off the minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet and have no minimum lot size, but that reverts to the state minimum of five thousand square feet. Making those two changes brings us into compliance. It's, it doesn't seem to be that big of a lift, and the reason why is because in the downtown district, there are two categories that allow a property owner to develop multifamily housing. One is straight multifamily housing that is only residential, and that's the category that we're looking to change. And the other category is mixed use. So mixed use is what the downtown district was developed for, to allow commercial, commercial use on the first floor and residential use on other floors or the back of the building, whatever. So the mixed use criteria, the mixed use category is not changing. The mixed use is still, you're allowed to have one commercial unit and up to three residential units. Any more than three is by special permit. When the downtown district was created, the goal was to sort of incentive, incentives, make it an incentive to use the mixed use criteria. So if you look at the setbacks for mixed use versus multifamily, mixed use allows you a seven-foot front setback, and multifamily requires a fifty-foot setback, which is twice as much as any of us are held to anywhere else in town. For mixed use, the side setback is six feet. For multifamily, the side setback is thirty feet. So if there's a developer who wants to develop multifamily, there's almost definitely going to look at the mixed use opportunity because you get to use a lot more of the lot. Anyway, that's all to say that we don't think that this is going to make a significant difference in the downtown district, and we're really just going from four to six units by right and changing the standard lot size. And the lots are all pretty, at minimum, already in the downtown district. So I'm happy to answer questions, but that's it in a nutshell. The Planning Board does support this article. Planning Board supports this article because if we aren't in compliance, then we're going to lose money, get fined, and have someone rewrite our bylaws, not because we necessarily think it's a zoning improvement that we need, because we don't.
Any further discussion?
Question, Betsy Ridge, twenty-two Saganese Road. You have C four below, and I understand the mixed use piece is not what we're voting on because it's the same as what it was, but it'd be really helpful to know where that is and how to find it. Under Article Four, under two residential, as part of mixed use, C four below, but I don't find a four below, so I'm just curious if you know what that is or can tell us anything.
This is not changing.
Right.
But she's asking, does it actually?
So note four, which was not copied because it's not changing, but note four reads that, lots larger than sixty thousand square feet will be required to maintain maximum lot coverage of structures at the current standard of twenty-five percent. So that's not changing, and that's what note four says. Sure, thank you.
Further discussion?
Where does it say?
Just, could you state your name and address?
Michael State, sixty-seven Wood Drive. Where does it say that it only applies to the downtown district?
I'm sorry?
Where does it say in the warrant that it only applies to the downtown district?
It's because the change that's being proposed is in Section six dash three point three point three, which is the downtown district.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Article Four is a, it is a zoning bylaw, but because, I believe the state says that because it's housing, it's just a majority vote, one of the few zoning bylaws that doesn't require a two-thirds vote. So this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article Four, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes. Article Five.
I Lisa O'Donnell moved at the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws, Section six dash four point two point eight, accessory dwelling unit, ADUs, as shown in Article Five of the warrant.
Is there a second?
So Article Five in the warrant has Item D in boldface, so that's added. Nothing else is changing. We are adding language that would, we're proposing to add language that would require that an accessory dwelling unit not be legally separated or conveyed from the principal dwelling unit in order to keep the accessory nature of the accessory dwelling unit. This would not allow someone to build an ADU on their property and then condo their property. So condoing property is something that's becoming more common recently, and we do see it in Essex because Essex allows single-family and two-family by right. If you have more than seventy thousand square feet on your lot, you can build two principal dwelling structures. More than a hundred thousand, a hundred and ten thousand square feet, you can build three principal dwelling structures. And this allows people to take properties of that size and actually condo them so they make an association out of the property. The association owns the land, and each of the structures is sold as a condo. That can be done with freestanding structures or two-family, you can divide that and condo that as well. You, without adding this to our bylaw, you would be able to condo an ADU. When the state made the new ADU regulations a year ago, the intent behind those guidelines, regulations, was to increase the rental housing stock in the state, not so much to increase homeownership per se. So the intent of the ADU law was to create rental units, and if we adopt the language that requires common ownership between an ADU and the principal structure to which it is accessory, then you wouldn't be able to condo an ADU. Planning Board supports this article. We also are bringing this to the town meeting because we think this is something that town meeting should decide. Because unless we adopt this, people can do that, and people might not be aware that that's a thing that could be done. So we're bringing it to your attention to say, do you want people to be able to condo ADUs, or do you think that ADU should remain as rental housing stock?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, although, this is two-thirds. All those in favor of Article Five, raise your card. Opposed? The motion passes. Article Six.
I Lisa O'Donnell moved at the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws, Section six dash two point two, definitions, as shown in Article Six of the warrant.
Is there a second?
There are two definitions that we're proposing to change the language on to clarify what, how these two, two building features are measured. The first is building height, and right now, the building height is measured from the front of a building at the existing grade before construction starts to the roof line. And there's a couple definitions for roof line, but that measurement is thirty-five feet. What happens when you're just measuring in one spot is that if the grade changes and there's a slope on the site, you can either be, you can benefit or you can be penalized. So if you, and I'm just going to use examples here because they're probably fresh in people's mind, and it will make it more clear what I'm trying to articulate. We had a proposal before us for forty-four Main Street about a year ago, and that property slopes at least ten feet front to back. So a building that's measured at thirty-five feet at Main Street can be forty-five feet in the back of it, if you're just measuring in one spot. If you go across the street from the fire station, they're building a new condo there. It's a new townhouse, two, two-family there. That lot slopes up very steeply, and when you measure thirty-five feet from the front, you lose a story in the back. So what we're proposing is that the building height is measured at the average grade of all of the corners of a building. So you go around the perimeter of a building, and every time there's a corner in or out, take the grade there, average it, and then that is the grade by which the building height is established. This is how virtually every other town does it, except us. So we're proposing to change it. It basically makes, I'm going to use a bad pun, it kind of levels the playing field for everyone, so that we're all sort of measuring from your average grade and not that one grade at your front door. The second is just to clarify the half-story, and it's a little esoteric, but we've, we've run into this problem before, so this language is based on experience that we've had and just trying to make it clear, basically, to architects about what constitutes the half-story when you're looking at a one and a half-story building. And it's really just looking at the floor area where you have clear head height. So I'm happy to answer questions.
Any further discussion?
Jack Gale, one oh five Pond Street. Lisa, could you explain what you mean by measured at all exterior corners of the building to the highest point of the roof surface, if a flat roof, to the deck line for mansard roofs, and to the mean height between eaves and ridges for gables, hip, and gambrel roofs? Maybe just simplify that by telling me what you mean. What's the purpose of, is it the building height requirement now to, for a gable roof?
So I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but.
No, please.
That language isn't changing. It's only the boldface that's changing, so that's, that's our existing definition of a roof height.
Okay, so does that mean that if I have a gable roof, you're not measuring to the peak of the roof?
No. If you, so that, for a gable roof, it's the mean height between the eve and the ridge. So if your gable roof is this, this is your eve, that's your ridge, your mean height is right here. It's the average of the eve and the ridge is your mean height. Your thirty-five feet is measured to here.
Essentially, the middle point between the eaves and the.
Right.
Peak of the roof.
Correct.
So if I have a, a roof that's twenty-five feet high, that's not the height of the roof then? It's the, it's measured between the eve and the peak?
Between the eve and the ridge, correct. And this is not changing. That's not part of the article.
I understand that.
Right, yeah.
And why is, why is it not measured to the peak of the roof? Wouldn't that be much simpler?
Come back in the spring, we might be talking about it then.
I probably will.
Any further discussion? This is also a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article Six, raise your card. Opposed? It passes by two-thirds. Before we start, Lisa, I have to back up to Article Five. It wasn't unanimous, so I have to announce to my clerk and record it. That was a, that was a two-thirds, not a unanimous. So I just have to make sure Amy gets the right information. Article Seven.
Hello? I Lisa O'Donnell moved at the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws, Section six dash six point five point four, public safety provisions, as shown in Article Seven of the warrant.
Is there a second?
This is another clarification on something that we've run into problems with, not problems, but just different interpretations. And what you see in the warrant is the part of the bylaw that talks about limitations on signs due to public safety concerns. The only part that's changing is on the second page in the next-to-last paragraph in boldface, where it says, "Signs shall not project above the highest point or the ridge of the roof or top of the parapet of any building." So right now, it reads with the language that's in strike through and says, "Shall not project above the roof or front parapet." The roof has been ambiguous because, as we just talked about, a gable roof has a slope, and you have an eve, and you have the roof surface, and you have the ridge. So is the roof the ridge, the surface, or the eve? So we're clarifying it now and saying the roof height, for purposes of signs, is the ridge.
Any further discussion? This is also two-thirds. All those in favor of Article Seven, raise your card. Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Article Eight.
I Lisa O'Donnell moved at the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws, Section six dash two point two, definitions, and six dash ten point six, special permit regulations, as shown in Article Eight of the warrant.
Is there a second? Yes? Lisa?
Again, this is just a clarification that we want to add to the bylaw. There is a section that is six dash four point three point one point four, which is the evaluation and decision criteria for a special permit. And that language was added a couple years ago, and it appears in the section of the bylaw that addresses special permits. Special permits also surface two other locations in the bylaw, one in six dash two point two definitions, and then again in six dash ten point six point four, which talks about how the administration of a special permit. The language that we're proposing to add here makes a reference to the evaluation criteria that are in six dash four point three point one point four in these two other sections so that it's clear to anyone who's looking into special permits, whether you find it in the definitions, whether you find it in special permit administration, or the section on special permits, that these evaluation criteria still apply.
Any further discussion? This is also two-thirds. All those in favor of Article Eight, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes by two-thirds. Article Nine.
I Lisa O'Donnell moved at the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws, Section six dash three point three point six, permitted accessory structures and uses, as shown in Article Nine of the warrant.
Is there a second?
Section six dash three point three point three point six is part of the downtown zoning district, and this subsection talks about permitted accessory structures and uses. The downtown zoning district was approved at town meeting in 2021, and in the warrant, the maximum permitted height of an accessory building was shown as fifteen feet. That's what was voted on at town meeting. Somewhere between town meeting and getting transcribed into the bylaw, that number changed to twenty-five feet. We don't know how it happened. Someone brought it to our attention. We looked back at what was approved in the warrant in 2021, found the fifteen feet. So this is a correction, and it's not a change. It's bringing it back to what town meeting voted on in 2021.
Any further discussion? This is two-thirds. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes by two-thirds.
Thank you. And I didn't take forty-five minutes, Mr. Moderator.
That was all the zoning in less than an hour. Thank you, Lisa, and the Planning Board for all their hard work. Article Ten.
Article Ten. I Alvin Guero moved the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E and a half, to amend Section two dash twenty-six of the town's general bylaw to create a new revolving fund for the Essex Police Department for the purposes shown in Article Ten on the warrant, with an annual spending of, spending of fifteen thousand for fiscal year 2026, with such spending limit to be applicable for each fiscal year until such time as the town votes prior to July first for ensuing fiscal year to increase same.
Is there a second?
I have nothing on this. This is came to the police chief. If anybody has any questions, I can ask him to come up and add more info.
Good evening. So the reason we brought this about is more often we're seeing contractors requesting cruisers on details, and we're burning our fuel, we're paying for the oil changes, it's wear and tear on the tires, brakes, and everything else. So this is a way to recapture a fee. If you're requesting our equipment, it would also apply to people requesting the light tower for, you know, some event or anything that is equipment-related. This is a means to capture a fee that will offset our maintenance costs.
Any further discussion?
Gil Frieden, one oh four John Weisav. So I understood this was, you were already capturing a fee, and then this was going to go into a special account, but you're actually already doing all those details for free, and now this is going to add a fee to that? Clarify.
So we have not, the town has not collected a fee when a contractor requests a cruiser on a detail. It's very common for other municipalities to do this, so we're just catching up to the times.
Any further discussion? All those in.
Yes.
Sorry. All those in favor of Article Ten, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes. Article.
I would just want to reconsider Article Five if, before we get off.
Excuse me?
I would like to reconsider Article Five. It's the one about not being able to condoize our ADUs, which was how I was planning to stay in my home. So this really messes up my.
To reconsider, I have to get permission from, so to reconsider would open up the discussion back up for Article Five. A positive vote to reconsider gets us back there. A negative vote to reconsider keeps it, and we move on, and we don't talk about Article Five anymore. So all those in favor of reconsidering Article Five, raise your card. All those opposed? Does not pass. So we will go to Article Eleven.
I Peter Fippen moved that the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E and a half, to amend Section two dash twenty-six of the town's general bylaws to update the allowed expenditures in three different revolving funds for the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, respectively, each currently for the purpose of paying advertisers for legal advertisements required for the work of each entity, with additional to be allowed. with additional to-be-allowed expenditures shown in Article Eleven of the warrant, and to increase spending limits to $15,000, $9,000, and $9,000, respectively, for fiscal year 2026, with such spending limits to be applicable for each fiscal year until such time as town meeting votes prior to July 1st for the ensuing fiscal year to increase the same.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Yeah, so this is just allowing increases in what the, the different entities, the different boards, have to spend. All of the funds are coming from the applicant, so there's no cost to the town at this point. Just allows them to spend more because advertisements and notices and all that sort of stuff are getting more expensive.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article Eleven, raise your card. Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Article Twelve.
I, Alvin Guajaro, move that the town vote to amend Section two dash four dot two of the town general bylaws concerning the finance committee, as shown in Article Twelve.
Is there a second? What's the point of order?
Brian Roster, 30 showed. I raise a point of order. The bylaw amendment described in Article Twelve appears to be based on outdated text. The Attorney General of the Commonwealth approved a revision to this bylaw on September 2nd, 2025, and that approved language is now in effect. The warrant article refers to the prior version, which no longer exists in law. Therefore, I believe this article is not in proper form for town meeting action, so that it sits at six to amend text that is no longer operative.
I'm going to talk to my legal counsel on that one.
I just, so that's really why I'm doing it. It's not to upset, it's not to be in favor of the FinCom. It's just a matter of having one person trying to determine, and one person who actually is busy. And you really don't want to have a FinCom open spot for more, even 30 days is too much in some cases. So if you have any questions, please.
Further discussion?
Brian Roster, 30 showed. I move to indefinitely postpone Article Twelve, so the text can be corrected to reflect the bylaw currently in effect, and to allow voters a sufficient posting period to understand the proposed change.
So in order for that to happen, I need a second for that? It is debatable if there's anyone, any further discussion on that motion?
Sorry. I'm, I'm, sorry. I move to indefinitely postpone Article Twelve, so that the text can be corrected to reflect the bylaw currently in effect, and to allow voters a sufficient posting period to understand the proposed changes.
Okay, is there, there a second? We got a second to that? And any further discussion? It's debatable to indefinitely postpone? Any further discussion? This takes a majority vote to postpone this article? You guys talking about the article or the postponement?
The postponement.
Okay.
I don't know how anybody could be expected to vote on an article that's not in writing in front of us. I've reviewed the warrant, and I came here tonight, prepared to vote on the warrant, to find out that the warrant was incorrectly prepared. Makes me think that this article is not ready to be reviewed by voters, and I support Brian's motion to postpone.
Any further discussion on the motion to postpone? All those in favor of postponing Article Twelve, raise your card. All those opposed to postponing? The motion passes. We will move on to Article Thirteen. It is. Take your time, Annie.
I, N. Cameron, move that Article Thirteen be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second? All those in favor of postponing, raise your card. All those opposed, motion passes. Correct. Article Fourteen.
I, Peter Fippen, move that the town vote to amend Section four dash four A dot six of the town's general bylaws to increase mooring fees, as shown in Article Fourteen of the warrant.
Is there a second?
So none of these fees have been increased in probably 25 years, and they're fairly modest. Mooring permit going from $6 to $8 per foot for a minimum total of from 90 to 100. Waitlist is going from 10 to 15, and a temporary mooring permit from 10 to 15 as well.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article Fourteen, raise your card. Opposed? The motion passes. Article Fifteen.
I, Alvin Guajaro, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $30,208, from water retained earnings, the sum of $11,601, and from sewer retained earnings, the sum of $2,508, for a grand total of $44,317 to fund and implement a collective bargaining agreement between the town, between the town and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 2905, comma AFL dash CIO.
Is there a second? Discussion?
This is the contract for our DPW and clerks in town, and we were able to get that, so we have a three-year contract with the DPW and clerks.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article Fifteen, raise your card. Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Article Sixteen.
I, Peter Fippen, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $40,000 for design, cost estimation, and oversight of a project for the removal and disposal and/or beneficial reuse of a large soil pile from DPW trench excavation operations that exists at the DPW yard at 30 Landing Road and anything incidental or related there, too.
Is there a second?
So you've probably all seen at the, at the DPW yard, there's a big pile of waste soil there that, as the article mentioned, came from, mainly from trenching operations, the sewer, you know, water main breaks, that type of stuff. This material potentially could be hazardous, and so we want to test it. We also want to permit the process of moving it, pulling together bid documents and that sort of thing. So that amounts to about $40,000.
Any further discussion?
Yes, a question.
Name again, please.
Jack Gale, 105 Pond Street. Has any testing been done? Is one question. Is the estimated cost largely for the testing? Or is there money in there for trucking it somewhere? And have you considered finding people who might want this pile of stuff and be willing to truck it away for free?
Testing was done many years ago, Brenda. Do you want to speak to this?
Brendan, is there a break?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, some testing was done, but it was done in the past, as Peter just mentioned. In addition, we don't know if the amount of testing that was done was done evenly throughout the pile of material. It does not include any cost to truck it away. This is just to have an engineer come in, have a look at the situation, do the appropriate amount and spatial distribution of sampling, so that it can be determined which type of disposal yard it could go to. There are several different options depending on the level of contamination. No, we have not considered allowing someone to come and pick it up, because that might be a liability to the town, because it's contaminated material that is up to us to dispose of properly.
So you've determined that it's contaminated?
Based on the soil testing that was done in the past, it appears that it is going to come out that way. But we do not have enough information yet to determine, to verify that for sure, and then to determine at what level this material comes in at to determine what disposal option we'd have to pursue.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in article, all those in favor of Article Sixteen, raise your card. Opposed? The motion passes. Article Seventeen.
I, Peter Fippen, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $15,000, to be used as a match to state legislative earmark for the further study of environmental issues associated with Chabaco Lake, Airway Brook, and the surrounding watershed, or anything incidental or related there, too.
Is there a second?
So we've received an earmark from the state. This is the second year of this water quality assessment of Chabaco Lake. We're looking for $15,000 from Essex to match. Hamilton has already voted to match $15,000, so that'll be a total of $60,000 to work on, as I mentioned, the second year of this water quality study.
Any further discussion?
Nick Ellis, 10 Rocky Hill Road. Just a question related to the purpose of this study and what it ultimately means to determine. For those who are unaware, our wellfields are within the vicinity of Chabaco Lake. My main concern is that the findings are going to restrict our use of the wellfields around Chabaco Lake. So could you elaborate on what the purpose of the study is?
Well, there's a lot of water quality issues. There's invasive plants that are prolific in the, in the lake. There's also some potential contamination in the sediment. There has been a study of the wells and the impact of the water on the wells, and that showed that there isn't really a significant amount, if I'm correct at that, Brendan. But, you know, we had the cyanobacteria breakout last year, as well as several years ago. So there's, there are some issues that need to be addressed, and we're trying to get to the bottom of those.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article Seventeen, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article Eighteen.
I, Alvin Guajaro, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $90,000 for a local match, for a federal grant, or for a, for a new fully-equipped boat for the Harbor Master Department, and anything incidental there, too, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into necessary agreements to effectuate the purpose of this vote and to dispose of the old Harbor Master boat for sale or trade.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Peter Ferrio, 26 Rocky Hill Road. I'm 100% in favor of spending money on the Essex River. We really don't give it the time of day, and it's the lifeline of our town. Where I think there's a significant oversight here. We have roughly 250 boats moored in the river, about 350 berthed at the Marinas. And last Fourth of July, there were about 225 boats inside of Essex River. Of course, some of them from, from within the river and some outside of the river. I think we're the only town without a boat waste management program. My concern is about the health of the river. Due to that, I think a consideration should be given if we're spending this type of money. Really appreciate Brendan going and getting grants. But we need to consider a boat waste management program, which could include that in a boat. I, I was a Harbor Master roughly 50 years ago, Selectman about 45 years ago. I'm really aware of the needs of the river. I'm really happy to see the police department take over the Harbor Master positions, but we do need to give this more consideration.
Any further discussion? Chief?
So to, to that point, we are required to meet with DMF and do regular inspections of vessels with marine sanitation devices that are moored within specific distances of open clam flats. This year, they, they've been trying to get a hold of us for two or three years, and they were just put off. So this year, we actually did do that. We are currently in compliance with the MSD, we'll call it density, of vessels that are moored near the clam flats. So that is something that we are aware of and are starting to do right now.
But what is being done with boat, boat waste management?
So step, step one is going out with DMF and seeing how many boats. Once you reach a certain Once you reach a certain amount of vehi, of vessels with marine sanitation devices, that triggers additional action when you would need a pump-out boat or something else. Right now, we're not at that limit, and that's per DMF.
What, what is the limit?
I believe it was more than twenty-five per five hundred feet within an open clam flat, and it has to be a hard-plumbed MSD on the, on the vessel.
Interesting. I'd be challenged to see us in compliance, but I'm glad to see it being given consideration. There's more to come from me on this topic and taking care of the Essex River.
And, and also to that point, we're switching over to new software, DOCA. You will have to list what you have for marine sanitation devices on your boat so we can give a yearly report to DMF. So we're aware of all of these regulations, and we're trying to get compliant with them.
Okay. Sounds like we're going in the right direction. Brendan, you're gonna have to get us some more money for a pump boat. Thank you.
He's on it. Further discussion?
Michael Ginn, twenty-six John Wise Avenue. I, I don't see any cost figures related to this article. To me, it seems like we're just giving a blank check or blank approval.
There's a whole cost breakdown up over on the table.
Okay. I'm all for the Harbor Master getting a nice boat, but, you know, I, I, I think we need to really look at the costs of such things and, and be a little more conservative in our spending.
So I can take you through that right now as to why we're even asking for this vessel in the first place. So the police took over July one, and within the first week, we found the boat was in a significant state of disrepair. The immediate needs that we have outlined right now, we can go through the list. The boat is a two-thousand, twenty-three-foot Parker. When we got it, it was already a hand-me-down boat from the environmental police. They had used it hard-service life for about twelve years. We used it. It broke down a couple times. We had to repower it. And currently, it has a two-stroke E-Tech motor on it that has over two thousand hours on it. That will need to be replaced. We have two trailers for it. Both of them are in a state of disrepair. To replace just one of them is five thousand, two ninety. Every electronic device on the boat is inoperable. The display screens, radar, navigation, the flare, VHF, our searchlights, the dash instrument cluster such as fuel gauge, RPMs, engine hours, nothing works. We've had various dealers look at the boat to see what it would cost to rewire it, and that's about sixty-five thousand dollars just for the rewire. Those are the immediate needs. The will need soon is the motor. We are, you know, hobbling that along, but a new motor is gonna cost anywhere between thirty-five thousand and forty-five thousand. The issue with that is some manufacturers might not warranty the motor because of the age of the fuel tank. We looked at how much it would be to replace the fuel tank, remove that, re-glass the boat. That's an additional thirty-eight thousand dollars. The total refit estimate, soup to nuts, was one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one forty-five. So FinCom was aware of this when we said we were having all these issues. They said, stop throwing good money after bad. See what grants are out there. During a dredge meeting, I met with Senator Tarr. He was aware of the FEMA Go grant. He said, definitely put in for it. I'll do everything I can to make sure that, you know, the towns, you know, we're going up against, you know, New Bedford, all these other big ports. He was able to get us this grant. So in line with the grant is your mission priorities. So our biggest priority is public safety response to include police, fire, EMS, or disaster and oil spill response. Our biggest unified crew response with the fire department is cardiac events on the water, law enforcement. This summer, we've had domestics on the water. We've had BUI crashes in the past, dangerous operation. People complain about being waked and washed while they're out on their boats. Mooring compliance and DMF marine sanitation device compliance. So that was another big thing that we have to be doing more, and we have to get out there. Aids to navigation and placement with the river dredging. I'd say the Army Corps had us go out no less than four or five times to go out and check the placement of the moorings this year. And then just our general service response. Endangered or disabled vessel towing or rescue, and that's like a boat that's taking on water. We did have one or two boats this season that were taking on water. We towed it, we tie up to them, hip tow, bring them back into shore. That's the extent of the towing. We're not sea tow. We're not, you know, tell you a battery died. We'll bring you a jump pack, but we're not gonna just tow you around the river. So if we turn over to the next side, we only had one week to apply for this grant. So part of the grant is only certain manufacturers are approved by the grant. And the three that we looked at were Safe Boat, Metal Shark, and then Ribcraft. We had various boats that were mu, where they were bigger than what we already have. We didn't want to go any bigger because the river is only so big. The, the sweet spot we found was the Metal Shark twenty-three-foot Relentless Center Consul. That had the lowest town match of roughly ninety thousand, and the grant was giving us two seventy-nine, seven forty-eight. That will cover the boat, trailer, all electronics, and the motors. People raised, they had been sending emails concerned about fuel efficiency. The newer four-stroke digital throttle and shift is more fuel-efficient than those engines without that manual cable, as well as the older carbureted motors. So no matter how you slice it, the boat's gonna be more fuel-efficient. Winterization costs, we're currently paying roughly three thousand to winterize the old boat. We had two quotes for winterization. That was plus or minus two thousand. So there's potentially a thousand dollars in savings to winterize the newer boat. And then just the, the grant, FEMA Go, it had to be compliant with Build America, Buy America Act, and that's why we arrived at those three manufacturers.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Hi, Edward Cushing, fifteen Spring Street. If you are interested in buying a new boat, what dock are you planning on attaching it to since the dock down at the landing is absolutely deplorable? And you also need a pump-out station? I mean, not for a town dock. You're gonna spend a half million dollars on a boat but not have a dock for it? So you're really not looking at the cost of a boat. You're looking at all these other elements. And why does it have to be a new boat? How much, what's the utilization rate of that boat now? I mean, how many hours a week is it out on the water?
Well, the grant, first, we're not paying a half million. We're paying ninety thousand. That's the town's match.
I understand the dollars and cents. I'm asking what utilization rate and who's qualified to operate the vessel at this point? I'm a former captain on the Essex River, and basically, we saw the Harbor Master out there on weekends. Weekends only. So you're gonna spend five hundred thousand dollars to have a, a weekender?
Where are you getting five hundred thousand?
Well, you've talked about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Four hundred thousand dollars are those are the quotes in your paperwork?
Right. We're not going with any of those boats. We went with the cheapest one that still fulfills the mission requirements that the Harbor Master has. So when you talk about qualifications, the reason there was a switch was because the previous administration was not qualified to be Harbor Master.
Understand. Well, that's my question is, it's a, it's a big investment for a part-time position.
Correct, but it is a necessary asset for both police, fire, and harbor.
And what are you gonna do about, where are you gonna dock this boat?
That might be for another discussion. Right now, we're trying to work on a boat.
Well, there, that's sort of the hidden, unmentioned cost because you'll have to re-permit that dock. Right now, it can fit one, one guest boat or two on one side, and then the Harbor Master boat sucks up all the other dock space. You are aware of that, I'm sure. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in fa, wait a minute? All those in favor of Article eighteen, raise your card, please. All opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Article nineteen.
I, Daniel Dusset, John Wise Avenue. I, Daniel Dusset, move the town move to transfer from free cash the sum of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to purchase a fully-equipped new tanker truck for the fire department to replace the fire department's existing tanker truck, and anything incidental thereto, and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into any necessary agreements to effectuate the purpose of this vote and to dispose of the old tanker truck by sale or trade.
Is there a second?
I'll do the quick scenario. Fire department has four fire suppression vehicles, two are engines. One's a ladder truck, one's a tanker truck. Depending on where the fire is and what part of town, we have a third of the town that does not have hydrants. That includes John Wise Avenue beyond the golf course, Island Road, Choate Street, half of Belcher Street, Pond Street beyond Wood Drive, Wood Drive, Apple Street from Turtleback to Southern, Southern from Apple to Manchester, Andrew Street, Kings Court, half of Harlow Street, half of Lufkin Street, and the entire Canoma Point and Lufkin Point section of town have no municipal water. So for a typical fire response, it's typically an engine with a water supply, which is our tanker. We're looking to replace a nineteen ninety-two tanker, which is thirty-three years old. It was manufactured on an international commercial chassis. It only has nineteen thousand miles, but the engine hours are equivalent to a hundred and thirty thousand hours. It served the town well. It was manufactured before NFPA standards were incepted, and it was, and it's approaching its end of its useful life. Even small repairs such as light bulb replacement have become difficult as replacement parts are difficult to source due to lack of availability. Mechanical issues recently have caused us to place significant amounts of money in it to replace the turbo and powertrain issues, which had, by the time the parts were sourced, required that the truck was out of service for two, up to two months. We do have some plumbing and pump issues, but with those significant cost of repair, it's not really manageable to do on that age of a vehicle. Sorry, I kind of went out of order here. So what is the need? Our, our goal is to replace the vehicle with a new vehicle, two-man cab, three-thousand-gallon tank, which is a thousand gallons more than we currently have, a pump, and then the, some firefighting equipment. This vehicle responds, as I said, to any potential water supply issues. That tanker responds. It, fire, if any of the firefighter operations just, you know, require sustained water supply, we use a portable tank. We dunk water, and we shuttle it from another location. Today's structures fire is burned hotter and faster, so even wildfires, due to the inclimate, the change in the climate, it's, we are required to have a rapid fire attack with a good reliable water source. While there is no good time about when to do this, custom fire apparatus sometimes takes twenty-four to thirty-six months. We feel it's necessary to replace this vehicle, but by purchasing a stock unit that is readily available and with significant cost to the town. The vehicle we are proposing, if we had done a custom vehicle and waited two years for it to be delivered, if our other one limped through, through those two years, would be up well over a million dollars. We, we seek, oh, excuse me. We, we, I can't speak. It's the forty years. We did seek many, multiple funding sources through grants and so forth for the vehicle, but we are unsuccessful. We have received over, in the last several years, over four hundred thousand dollars in grants, including portable radios, self-contained breathing apparatus, and gear. But we were unable to secure money for a tanker. This is a very important thing, to have a reliable tanker for the life, safety, minimize damage to homes and property, ensure the firefighter's safety. Members of the fire department ask you for your support, and now I hand you to Chief Castle.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article nineteen, raise your card. Any opposed? Article passes unanimously. Article twenty.
You ready?
Go ahead, Annie.
I, Annie Cameron, move that the town vote to transfer from the vehicles and major equipment that qualify as capital purchases, fund the sum of seventy-three thousand, five hundred dollars to purchase a fully-equipped new vehicle for the police department to replace an existing police vehicle and anything incidental thereto, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into any necessary agreements to effectuate the purposes of this vote and to dispose of the old police vehicle by sale or trade.
Is there a second?
Thank you. Tom would love to come up and talk to you about this, but it's about, I think, writing the vehicle replacement schedule for the police department.
Yes. So the last time we purchased cars prior to twenty-twenty-five was twenty-twenty. So all the mileage ran up on the cars. The maintenance is getting out of control. They're breaking down routinely. We've had one engine replaced in one of the Durangos. They're all experiencing similar issues. The Dodges, once you get up over seventy thousand, they're just not reliable anymore. So we're transitioning to Ford. So this is part of a, a bigger fleet plan that we've had and discussed starting as far back as April to kind of cycle the cars out, stagger the mileage so we can get back on schedule so that we're not asking for multiple cars. We're asking for one car every year.
Any further discussion?
Gil Frieden, one oh four John Wise Ave. Is it going to be a diesel?
No, it's going to be a Ford Explorer.
I think the answer was no, Gil.
Why isn't it going to be a diesel since we're going to have our own diesel depot?
It's actually gonna have regular fuel as well.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Roland Adams, Belcher Street. I'm curious. We're spending gobs of money here tonight. Does the finance committee have any opinion on what's being spent?
I did ask before we started if the finance committee supported all the financial articles, and the answer was yes, so they support all of them.
It would be nice to hear from them.
You will. Okay, no further discussion. All those in favor of Article twenty, raise your card. Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Article twenty-one. No, Michelle? No, Michelle? Michelle French? No? Michelle's not here? Anyone? Community preservation?
I, Peter Pippin, move that the town vote to appropriate a re, appropriate a reserve from the community preservation fund, the sums of money for community preservation projects or purposes, including, including to supplement prior appropriations having shortfalls and to close out prior appropriations so that any unspent funds will be available for future projects. All is shown on the Community Preservation Act handout.
And? Any further discussion? Looks like Brendan?
Just wanted to mention that that handout is on the back of the monetary summary in case you're looking to see what the Community Preservation Act information is for tonight.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article twenty-one, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article twenty-two.
I, Nina McKinnon, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the following sums of money to be added to the following funds. Twenty thousand to Climate Change Fund, one hundred thousand to the vehicles and major equipment that qualify as capital purchases fund, twenty thousand to the Town Hall Library Repair and Maintenance Fund, and three thousand to the Municipal Streetlight Repair and Maintenance Fund.
Is there a second? Can I have that? No discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article twenty-two, raise your card. Any opposed? Motion passes. Article twenty-three.
Hello. I, Nick Ellis, move that the town vote to transfer from sewer retained earnings the sum of ninety-one thousand dollars for the replacement of grinder pumps, sewer pumps, and related equipment, and anything incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second? Discussion?
So I feel like a broken record because I come up here every year and ask you guys for money for the same thing. We are continuing to replace old malfunctioning grinder pumps. We have about thirty-five left. The appropriation from this year, we will replace another ten of them, at least. We also, this year, have the wonderful task of replacing one of our large main sewer pumps in the pump station that you folks may have driven by on Harlow Street. We're looking at separate options for that. This appropriation will cover the most expensive option. If we happen to save money and get a cheaper pump, we'll use the rest of the money to buy more grinder pumps.
Discussion?
Yep. Kate Koch-Sunkquist, eight Dodge.
Kate Koch Sungquist, 8 Dodge Street. I, I understand that we're talking about sewers, I'm just wondering if there is also a plan to replace water meters at any point?
We are kind of replacing water meters in an ongoing fashion, but there's no, like, overall plan to replace everybody's water meter anytime in the near future. We kind of go through and find malfunctioning ones and replace them.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 23, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article 24.
I, Jody Harris, move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $4,300 to replenish the Finance Committee Reserves Fund for the fiscal year 2026.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Jody, I need that. All those in favor of Article 24, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article 25.
I, Ben Butrick, uh, move, sorry. I, Ben Butrick, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $884,589.79 to transfer from previous appropriations to the sum of $115,410.21, all as shown on the town meeting handout for Article 25, for a total of $1 million to fund the town's other post-employment benefits or OPEB trust fund.
Discussion, Ben?
Second, sir.
Sure. So, the town pays a, makes an annual payment for employee post-retirement healthcare benefits. We pay that every year, and that comes out of our annual operating budget. We have a trust fund that has been set up to actually take over for that liability from the town's budget, once we can get that trust fund to a level where we actually equal the actuarial future liability that we owe. The balance as of the most recent statement is $3.2 million in it. This will bring us up to 4.2. The future liability, according to the insurance actuary report, is about $5 million. So we're getting close to striking distance to be able to shift that liability to the trust fund. What that will do is it will free up the, the healthcare liability, which right now is close to 300,000. So if you think about that each year, that is, this is basically a productive use of the town's financial assets to save a future liability. The other thing that it'll do is it'll free up our need to have to shovel money into it every year. So this is leveraging the fact that we have the free cash to put, to basically shore up the trust fund, because from a strategic perspective, thinking big picture, we know we have liabilities coming. We have the school, we have the, the school building, you know, we have the school budget. Those are all things that are in front of us. This will actually free up some money, so it's part of a, really a long-term strategy.
Further discussion?
Brian Gressler, 30 Choate. What's the average yearly funding into the OPEB fund?
It's about, it's been about, good question, that's, it's been about 250,000 annually. So this is, this is a big, a big jump from what we've historically done.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I'm not going to, you know, I agree with everything Ben just said about the benefits of funding OPEB. I just think, given the size of the jump, and given, not just long-term potential liabilities, but short-term potential liabilities in the next budget cycle, this number seems a little high. I'd rather go for maybe half of this. Thank you.
Further discussion?
I'm actively standing. Thank you. Teresa Whitman, 8 Lufkin Street. I also am a big fan of the OPEB fund in my work in school committee. I'm always the one saying, no, let's not reduce our contribution, let's stick with that, because it is a very beneficial option, or requirement, excuse me. I also am concerned about the level of the jump, knowing the healthcare spike that our town and all of our other increases that are coming to us in that way, and I want to know if there was conversation about perhaps adding some of that money to the OPEB contribution, and perhaps using some of it to go toward the apportionment reserve fund that was cleared out, knowing that we have the operating budget conversation for the school coming up, and that we'll be voting on in May once again.
Well, we actually spent down the, the, the fund for the apportionment reserve, because that's actually, that's an annual liability that the town has in terms of the school's operating budget.
Right.
And so, what, what we're trying to do here is basically make a productive use of the, of this, you know, added free cash, so that we can, we can clear out a liability in the future to be able to actually fund things like the school, to essentially clear out some of our, our debt capacity. So, yes, I mean, we, we've had discussions on the Finance Committee, and I would invite anybody to come up here about, you know, the, the benefit of OPEB in terms of just the overall strategy, because it is one of the few, the, the fund is one of the few things that we can actually put money into, and it grows beyond just the rate that you actually get for cash. So we've had some actual nice growth in that trust fund. Unfortunately, healthcare costs have been, I mean, they've gone sort of parabolic over the last couple of years, so that has, that has hurt us. There's no visibility in terms of the future, in terms of having it perfectly, but what we want to do is we want to get that trust fund up close to the value of what that projected liability is expected to be. And I know this is a little bit wonky, but it is, it is part of a broader strategy, because we always go through and say, well, if we have the free cash, where should we allocate that money? And so, it's a, you know, I appreciate the question.
And I do understand, and I fully support, again, if you have some extra to put towards something, I think that is a valuable opportunity to take. I do have a little bit of concern about the amount of that jump. I would love to see even, even two-thirds of that, but also knowing that we have healthcare spikes right now, that we had this happen with the school operating budget last year, that it's going to be coming up again in the spring for the school operating budget, knowing that we have a building vote coming, you know, in the next year or so. I would really love to have seen something put toward that, back toward that apportionment reserve, which really only had, what, $50,000 in it to begin with, that got spent down, so that we could combat some of that escalating healthcare spike that we know will last for a year or two, and then hopefully come back down, knowing that we don't use it for operating funds, we use reserves for one-time costs, but this is a unique circumstance. So I would have, I would have liked to support that a little bit better, to split that up.
Okay, point taken.
Further discussion?
Gil Freed in 104 John Wise Ave. Yes, I also believe this is too much to put into the pension fund at this moment, so I would vote no on this.
Laura Doyle, 24 Maple Street. I've worked in benefits for a long time, and I only see healthcare costs going up. I think it's smart to be thinking about reducing liability, and we've spent a lot on school over the last several years. I think it's a good, a good use of funds, so I support it.
Annie? Go ahead, try it.
You're taller than me. I have to tell you that when I saw this number, I kind of flipped out, and so, we had a conversation about this at a meeting before this one, and I think that the logic makes sense. It will, in a couple of years, free up dollars for operating budgets, because we can fund the retiree health costs from the OPEB budget, or the OPEB fund, rather than the operating budget. So there are things that we want to do in town that we can't really swing right now, so being able to free up those dollars is, I think, a significant boon. And you're always very good at speaking to these things, if you wanted to add some color. I always appreciate your feedback.
Thanks, Annie.
Hi, it's Mike Flynn, Pond Street. You know, where this starts with me is, this is a legal and moral obligation we have to our retirees, and we have an opportunity here to get very close to taking a material cost away from the town long-term. $300,000, I think you mentioned, Ben, this year? So that moral obligation, plus we have the cash, plus, as Annie said, the monies will be used for other very good things in the future. What those things are, I don't know, but to have $300,000 to pay bond amortization and interest for potentially a new school, to have it for sewer and water projects, again, it's fungible, so I think this is a, we have the cash this year, it's an obligation to those people who have worked so hard, and it's a right, and it's just a good finance. Within roughly in three years, a million dollars, you get $300,000 back every year in cost savings, it's a, it's a, it's, it's a good sort of financial equation in my mind. But again, I, I do love the input from the rest of the town members, and it's a, it's a, it's, it is a complicated subject, but I think Ben did a great job explaining it. Thank you.
Can I make one more point? Sure.
Well, first of all, I just wanted to make, mention that this was a unanimous vote by the Finance Committee, and also, it is one of the few ways that we can, you know, so we decide, all right, so when we have additional free cash, where's that money going to go? We have all these different funds that we can put it in for different purposes, you know, emergency vehicle funds, ambulance funds, we, we do that, those are all capital items. In other words, those are one-time expenditures. This is one of the few ways that we can actually put money into a fund that will cover an operating item in the future, and that's always where we kind of struggle, because we live within a, a limit that we can, you know, without an override, we have to, we stay within Prop 2 and 1/2, so, so we all support it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 25, raise your card. Opposed? The motion passes. Article 26.
I, Alvinga Harrow, move that the town vote to amend the fiscal year 2026 wage and salary scale approved at the annual town meeting of May 5, 2025, by increasing the salary range for the superintendent of Public Works from $13,290 to, sorry, $113,290 to $136,813 to $120,000 to $160,000.
Is there a second?
So, as you know, our superintendent is retiring in early December, and we are looking to hire a new superintendent, and in order to do that, we have to be prevailing wages, we have to be able to pay them. So this is the reason for the increase, and I'm hoping it helps to get a person to come in.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 26, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. Article 27.
I, Jody Harris, move the town vote to transfer from available funds the amounts shown on the town meeting handout for Article 27, to amend the fiscal year 2026 town operating budget approved at annual town meeting of May 5, 2025.
Is there a second? Discussion? All those in favor of Article 27, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. Article 28.
I, Michael Flynn, move that the town vote to transfer from the remaining amount appropriated under Article 35 of the town meeting of 2022 unpaid bills from the prior fiscal year, the sum of $7,841.06, and the remaining amount appropriated under Article 29 of the fall town meeting of 2023 unpaid bills from the prior fiscal year of the sum of $1,042.94, for a total of $8,884 for new unpaid bills from past fiscal years.
Any discussion?
This is housekeeping, sometimes bills come in outside of the normal window, and we need your permission to take care of this accounting administration.
This requires a nine-tenths vote, so all those in favor of Article 28, raise your card. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Motion to adjourn? Have a good night, everyone, thanks for coming.